Good evening, everyone. A call this meeting to order in council chambers at 6:00 P.M. We do not have remote electronic attendance. Ms. Finch will not be with us this evening. Please keep her in your thoughts. She's an ailing family member. Roll call, please. Elder Person Murphy.
Present.
Messias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch. McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
All right. Board appointments. I do need to read all of these outlog for you, unlike our consent agendas. So I have a series of reappointments. Mayor's reappointment of Karen Dahlstrom to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners for a full three-year term to expire May 31st, 2027. The mayor's reappointment of Diane Anani to the Library Board for a full three-year term to expire May 31st, 2027. Mayor's reappointment of Elaine Capel to the Library Board for a full three-year term to expire May 31st, 2027. Mayor's reappointment of Frankie Cunningham to the Library Board for a full three-year term to expire May 31st, 2027. Mayor's reappointment of Dan Meisner to the Historic Preservation Commission for a full three-year term to expire April 30th, 2027. Mayor's reappointment of Barb Sandberg to the Historic Preservation Commission for a full three-year term to expire April 30th, 2027. And since she's here, thank you, Ms. Sandberg, for all of your dedication over all of these years and the continued dedication to come. Our presentation tonight is the Mental Health Awareness Month. Deputy Chiefs, would you like to come forward?
You got two deputy chiefs tonight because Chief Regan Weathers had a predation conference in beautiful Green Bay, Wisconsin tonight. Couldn't be here. He wanted to send his best and gave me a little thing he would like me to say for Dr. Vincent in mental health. As we continue through the month of May, it is crucial to acknowledge its significance as National Mental Health Awareness Month. This month serves as a poignant reminder of the importance of nurturing our mental well-being and fostering understanding and support for those facing mental health challenges. In the midst of our reflections, I'd like to extend my deepest gratitude to Dr. Carl Vincent for his unwavering dedication and support in providing assistance to our brave firefighters and police officers during their times of need. Dr. Vincent's commitment to mental health care for our first responders has been nothing short but of commendable. His tireless efforts have not only offered solace and guidance to those in distress, but have also underscored the vital role mental health plays in the lives of those who serve our community. In honoring National Mental Health Awareness Month, but it's not only raise awareness, but also extend our support and empathy to all of those who may be struggling silently. Together, through compassion and understanding, we can create a world where mental health is prioritized, stigma is eradicated, and support is readily available to all who need it. Thank you, Dr. Vincent, for your invaluable contribution and to everyone joining in this collective effort to promote mental well-being and create a brighter, more compassionate future for all. With that, I'd like to give Dr. Vincent a little gratitude of ours from the Fire Department. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We move to our proclamations. We have a series of them today. The first one is for International Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Thank you very much, and we'll share the sentiments with Ms. Murphy as well. Proclamation reads, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through 11th, 2024, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Thank you for all you do. There you go. Secondly, we have a proclamation from Darren Galt, Chief of Police, to observe the week of May 12th through 18th, 2024, as National Police Week. And that proclamation reads... Did you want to say anything, Chief? No, okay, I'll read it. The proclamation reads, whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others, and whereas each day more than 900,000 police officers across our country put on their badge and go to work knowing they may face extremely dangerous situations, with 245 officers giving their lives in the line of duty last year, and whereas the men and women of the Moline Police Department make difficult decisions every day to safeguard the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Moline and provide a vital public service, now therefore, I, Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby call upon all citizens of Moline and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through 18th, 2024, as National Police Week. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I certainly appreciate the acknowledgement of National Police Week. It's really a sobering day and week that nationally we recognize fallen officers in the United States. The numbers aren't getting any better. In 2019, there was 50 officers killed. 2020, 47, and these are by gunfire, I'm sorry. 2021, 64. 2022, 62. 2023, 46. And already in 2024, there have been 20 officers killed by gunfire and 136 shot. That's 1% greater than this time last year. So it is a sobering reminder of the dangers that law enforcement officers face to try to keep our communities safe. They're just like you and I. Your neighbors, your ball coaches, your pastor leaders at church, various different things in our community, and they just choose to be police officers, and they put their lives on the line every day. And so I would like you, if you would, please keep all officers, both in Moline, our Quad City region, and throughout the United States, in your prayers, in National Police Week, and thank you for the recognition of that day.
Thank you so much. One other area of our staff for the final proclamation, a proclamation made by the American Public Works Association to declare the week of May 19th to 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. Would you like to speak first? Okay. Proclamation reads, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Moline, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Moline to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association, now therefore, I, Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim May 19th to 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. Congratulations, Mr. Schmidt. All right. Public comment, Chief. Should we have people signed up?
There is none.
Okay. All right. We'll move to questions on our agenda. There is one clarification. In our consent agenda number 15, approval of minutes and appointments, there's a phrase that should have been on there after 15.1, Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of April 23, 2024, should have also said "and appointments made at Committee of the Whole on May 7th, 2024." So what we are going to do is, of course, I've read those appointments, but we will wait to approve the reappointments at the 2021st council meeting. So everyone can keep serving. It's not a problem. We'll just take care of it on the 21st. Okay? Committee of the Whole Agenda Items, 9.1, a resolution approving a special event that is sponsored by the Glen Oaks Neighborhood Association for the Morgan Park Fourth of July Parade scheduled for Thursday, July 4th, 2024, closing certain streets, more particularly described here into vehicular traffic, and authorizing the use of public right-of-way in conjunction with said event. Mr. Vitas.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, before you is a resolution that we're requesting approval to grant Glen Oaks Neighborhood Association the continuation of what is their longstanding historical tradition of a Fourth of July parade. And unlike prior years, what we're doing is we're actually going through the approval process that is normally required so that ensures that the proper placement of barricades takes place to secure and protect those who attend the event, because it is a very well-attended event. And with that, if Elder Person Messias wants to say anything, obviously it's his ward and his neighborhood, and the same goes for the Assistant City Administrator. Not that they're neighbors or anything.
Well, it's a really nice tradition that's been had for... I really, I don't think anybody else when it exactly started, but it's been decades. And it's just something that when we moved in, we realized was happening, and everybody's always invited, just a really neat parade, and I'm glad that we're getting it from life. I did have one question. Should I also abstain from the vote?
Did our legal counsel hear that online?
Yeah, I'm part of this neighborhood.
I did, and you may vote on this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Elder Person Messias, seconded by Timian. Discussion from the council. Thank you for your preamble. That was not a hand. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. 9.2, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to licensing agreements with Bent River Brewing Company and HOA Hotels LLC, Axis/5th Avenue Syndicate, for use of public right-of-way for an outdoor dining parklet installed by Quality Construction Services from May 1, 2024 through November 15th, 2024. Mr. Vitas.
Madam Mayor and members of council, we are looking for approval from you this evening to authorize the licensing agreement which will allow these two businesses, popular local businesses, Bent River Brewing Company and the Axis/5th Avenue Syndicate, to establish outdoor dining parklets for the timeframe that's been described. It has been reviewed by staff and approved. Recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Sorry, I thought you were stopped.
Do it again.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. That's Messias and Razak. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Timian.
For clarity, have we needed council approval for this in the past? When we had the parklets for Lago Marcinos and...
Tonys.
And Tonys and then...
Cafe Fresh.
Cafe Fresh, that's what I think.
Cafe Fresh.
I don't recall ever doing this. I just don't know if we were wrong then or if this is just better process.
I think they may have been in place before we took office.
They actually were in place before you entered office and before I sat here. And they've been in place. So, and we had agreements with Arrowhead Ranch and others to build them and put them up, dating back to when Jeff Manis worked in the administrator's office. So this is just formalizing that approval process.
Thank you.
Unless Chris has got something to say.
Anything further from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. 9.3, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a junior achievement of the Heartland JA BizTown sponsorship agreement between the City of Moline and Junior Achievement of the Heartland to sponsor and have access to a storefront in JA BizTown inside the Junior Achievement Inspiration Center located at 6644th Avenue, Moline, Illinois. Mr. Vitas.
Mayor and council, we wholeheartedly support what Junior Achievement, based here locally, is going to do at the vibrant headquarters property, the former Sam's Club, and relocation of BizTown from its longstanding location in downtown Davenport to the City of Moline. So we're looking for approval of the sponsorship agreement, which will span the next three years, and a specific project has been assigned to Macy McManus for the design of the interior of the city hall in BizTown.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you.
9.4, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Five Cities Construction Company for project number 1447, 2024 Sidewalk Infill Program for the amount of $211,038.
Madam Mayor and members of council, we're looking for approval for the award of this contract to Five Cities Construction Company for our sidewalk infill program, which is a budgeted program. The budgeted amount of that program is actually $200,000. The reason why it would then appear here, based on our policies, is that it exceeds by $11,038, that which was budgeted. So that would come from other sources within the budget, and we're recommending approval so we can begin this program, and it'll also appear later as a non-consent item.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Timian, seconded by Castro. Discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. 9.5, an ordinance amending Chapter 4, Alcoholic Liquor on the Moline Code of Ordinances, Article 3, Retail License Division 3 Privileges conferred by various classes of licenses by enacting a new Section 4-3318 entitled Option 5, Package Sales for Off-Premises Consumption for Class A Licenses Cease, and consecutively renumbering the remaining sections of Division 3 and amending Article 3, Retail Licenses, Division 2, Licensing Procedure, Section 4-3208, License Fees by adding fee information for the new Option 5.
I believe that the city attorney is...
Yes.
Here she comes.
All right.
Here I am.
Do you like... Have a preamble?
I would like to say that we did, as my memo informed, we prepared more information based on your questions and comments from last time. We also amended this proposed ordinance so that Class A licensees who buy this option, which by the way, we are proposing will cost $500 a year, they can sell any sort of packaged alcoholic liquor. With that option, we kept in the other restrictions or limitations, which include that the sales have to be in conjunction with other sales or events, that they still must meet the definition in the code of a Class A license holder, which means that sale of food has to be more than 50% of their revenue, that they cannot have packaged liquor displays, and to... That they are restricted to the hours of service or sales, same as their hours of service as a Class A. And of course, the reason, as I stated in my memo, is to maintain the integrity of the Class A license.
Okay, thank you so much. We need a motion and a second.
What was that?
We have to take it off the table.
Oh, motion to remove this item from the table.
Second.
Right. All right, thank you, Mr. Timian and Mr. Schmidt. That is correct. All right, discussion. We've gotten our questions answered. Mr. Schmidt.
Yes. No, I appreciated the additional insight. When we started talking about how it was going to impact that longer business piece, I just needed that refresher. I also think that we do a better service to places and a lot of the flexibility of all liquor types, not limiting it, just because I... Whenever we can make that simpler and easier for all options and opportunities, I think that's a better choice when it's not going to cause any problems. So, thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, all in favor?
I think we need a motion. I think we need a motion.
We took it off the table.
I believe we need actually a motion. Have we voted on the motion to take it off the table?
No, we just had discussion. Thank you. So first, just to clarify, so we don't have any more questions. We vote to take it off the table, then we can have a motion to approve?
Right.
And discussion, and got it, okay.
Right.
Thank you. All right, so if there's nothing further, all in favor of taking it... Or wait, removing from the table, do I have to do roll call?
Yes.
Thank you. Removing it off the table. Roll call, please. Elder Person Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays? Okay. Now I need a motion to approve in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Murphy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Whoops. All right, we are to 9.6, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to licensing agreements with 1848 Entertainment LLC, Doing Business as Pub 1848, and Stony Creek Caterers LLC, Doing Business as Stony Creek Inn, for use of public right-of-way for use of the Bass Street Landing Public Plaza for the outdoor service of alcoholic liquor and food from May 8th, 2024 to September 30th, 2024.
Madam Mayor, members of council, in keeping things in order and in compliance with our local ordinances, we are looking for approval of licensing agreements for these two businesses, both Pub 1848 and Stony Creek Caterers, to provide services during the Bass Street Landing concert series that is every Thursday through the summer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Messias, seconded by Razak. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 9.7, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to licensing agreements with Bent River Brewing Company and Three Brothers Hospitality LLC, DBA, Poor Bros Craft Tap Room, for use of public right-of-way for use of the Bass Street Landing Public Plaza to sell alcoholic liquor in conjunction with the Bass Street Landing Summer Concert Series from May 16th, 2024 through August 8th, 2024.
Madam Mayor and members of council, this would be the same explanation for these two local businesses for the Bass Street Landing Concert Series. We'd recommend approval.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Informational, Mr. Vitas, our May 2024 status and information report.
Sure, just for purposes of pointing out a few of the most recently completed projects or projects and other items here in the city. First and foremost, the final community engagement event that we've been working on is set for the riverfront redevelopment with MKSK. CED has been leading the charge on that, and that is scheduled for this coming Saturday at Mercado on 5th. And Chris, what time is that being held?
2:45. 3 o'clock is when the main presentation will start, but they're asking people to get there a little early.
Yeah, so if you want a seat. Yeah, if you want a seat, get there early. But they're going to unveil basically what is the synthesis of big idea one, big idea two, big idea three. And it is quite interesting, I will say that. I'm not saying that that's what the final plan will look like, because there's still community engagement to happen, and then there's council input, of course, which will lead to the final plan and the costing of that plan. So really exciting. That project is on schedule and going very well. In the world of IT, David Rowat and his team, working with all of the different departments, all 12, did a city website redesign, and so it's up, it's running, like all things website-oriented. We will continue to refine, but it is a much better product than we had before, and more in keeping with the standards that you see that other local governments do use across the country. The real advantage here is that before, we were kind of locked in in terms of what we could or could not do. This system allows us the flexibility to make modifications we could otherwise not do, and I would be looking for updates to each of the department pages as we move forward. HR has been busy, obviously, not only in terms of hiring people, but with promotions happening throughout the city. We are an employer of choice. That's fairly obvious, based upon the lower number, actually, of vacancies as compared to when we all got here several years ago. We've arrived, I think, through your guidance and through your support across the boards with salaries, benefits, and just creating an environment that people want to be a part of, so going very well in that respect. And last but not least, I'd just like to mention the Library Gardens project, truly exciting. What started out as a house and a garage and a lot next to the library on an acre, demolished property acquired by the city, the building's demolished by our Park and Public Works Department workers. We now, and with the design work of Shive Hanery, we have a really great project going forward. There will be an official groundbreaking. Everybody will be invited to that, and that is during the month of May, right around the time. One thing that's not on this newly completed items list, but I'm going to put it on, is the swimming pool. We are about to open up the premier swimming pool, in my opinion, here in the Quad Cities. Riverside River Slide will open on a soft opening for the city employees, two evenings before the official grand opening, and then the following night, there'll be another soft opening for the YMCA members as well, so that we can actually make sure our employees, both lifeguards and our concession staff and other parties that work with us, are prepared for the onslaught. I'm talking to Eric during our director's meeting today. All of our reservation nights are booked solid for the whole year, pre-sold.
Summer season?
Summer season is sold out. Those Sundays are sold out. So we have a really great product to deliver to the citizens of Moline, first and foremost. And for those who live in the Quad Cities, especially those in Bettendorf who, like us, got delayed because of the lack of state inspections, so we will be open, and come join us. Love to see you all there. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Vitas? Mr. Messias?
Thank you. Just kind of, this is very ambitious, and I see a lot of things really rocking and rolling, so thank you and all the staff for getting all these things going, and in particular, I love the fact that we have the numbers for some of the housing inspection, the rental housing inspection, the program is up and running. I'm kind of surprised, because just a couple months ago, I met the individual who was doing this, and it seems like he's up and running. So again, I commend you and all of the staff. It's really a very ambitious plan, and you guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you very much for that, and I'm sure the staff that's here appreciates it, those listening appreciate it, and those who aren't, we'll let them know. Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing further, we'll close out this meeting and call our regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Razak, do you have an invocation?
Thanks.
No? Okay, thank you. Roll call. Uh, roll call please. Alderperson Murphy?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Finch? McNeil?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the whole council and executive session meeting minutes of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and consent agenda items sixteen point one through sixteen point five and seventeen point one through seventeen point six inclusively.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Razak. Roll call please. Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Item number nineteen point one, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-five, zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Article one, general provisions and administration, division two, word usage, abbreviations and definitions, section thirty-five dash twelve oh three, definitions, and amending article three, zoning, division four, land use regulations, section thirty-five dash thirty-four oh one, regulation of allowed uses, table thirty-five dash thirty-four oh one point one, permitted land uses, and amended, amending section thirty-five dash thirty-four eleven, accessory residential land uses regarding zoning text amendments concerning accessory dwelling units.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Macias. Discussion?
Yes, I think that, um...
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I believe that this last week, since we voted last, several questions have come up about the present ADU and how it's written, and how it addresses, uh, emergency addresses, um, how it, um, deals with, um, covenants for neighborhoods like Wildwood and, um, uh, Greater, I think Oaks Tardeen, just to name a few. And the other, um, discussion I think that we need to really think about is the, the minor versus major, um, can't remember exactly what it's called.
Structure?
Structure, yes. Yes, how we're going to deal with the parking and if I remember correct from what I read, is that, um, there's going to be, uh, you can have the, um, business in your backyard as ADU, also one in your basement. So one resident could have two different ADUs, if that's what I understood. And there's no additional, um, I think it said, yeah, there's no additional places for parking for that either, so.
Can I ask Mr. Math- Mathias to answer the question about the, how many ADUs are allowed business-wise? You answered the question last time about business in general.
One ADU per lot, and the way the code reads now would treat an ADU like a house, so you could have certain limited in-home businesses in the ADU, just like you could another dwelling. But only one ADU per lot with this ordinance.
But you could also have a ADU in your basement or a business in your basement and an ADU in your backyard?
No, not by this ordinance, you'd be limited to one or the other. If your, if your lot was big enough and met all the other criteria that would allow the ADU in the first place.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughts. Others, yes, Ms. Castro?
Um, can you clarify the question regarding, um, like, if an HOA has a covenant that restricts the ADUs, does that supersede the ordinance?
The city would not enforce any covenants for a, private covenants for a subdivision. The city would not be enforcing those. So, so I wouldn't, yeah, so there's no... The law of the city is the law of the city.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody may have a private issue with their HOA if they choose to do it, if they choose to initiate an ADU.
So they can have it, so they can have it, we just wouldn't enforce it? It would be up to them to enforce it themselves by legal action?
Generally, yes. The only caveat I would put on that is if, if somebody came to me with an application for something and I knew ahead of time that this was a violation of those covenants, I would rely on my legal counsel to, to help me with that matter at that point. But, uh, based on what I'm telling you now, like I said, we usually would, most certainly would not enforce private covenants for somebody, but it may affect us signing off on a permit, I would work with our attorney in regards to that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Murphy?
So how would, um, the city handle the litigation? Who's going to pay for that? If we do get into a legal battle with the homeowner or HOA over AD?
Like I said, I don't think we'd be getting into the legal battle. We've had discussions on this with, like, members of our planning commission that actually have had that happen. Like, that's their legal battle to fight for the most part.
Yeah, you're, you're, to clarify, you're saying a resident going against their HOA rules would have the issue with them, not with the city? If, that's not our issue?
Correct, and that would be their legal fight, their legal expenses, because the city wouldn't be the one coming in to enforce that.
Ms. Kostopoulos, would you like to comment on a legal?
Yes. Um, to simplify that, well, um, i- in a homeowner's association, which has a restricted covenant with property owners, which prohibits, uh, ADUs, uh, the way that, um, that would work is that while they, the, those individual homeowners may be eligible to, uh, for a permit to, uh, erect or develop an ADU by city code, they're still nonetheless bound by the, uh, HOA agreement, so that we would not have any, um, issues in that, uh, conflict. So while we could, as Chris said, we could issue that, uh, permit, but it would still be in violation of the agreement as a homeowner in that HOA. So it would be a private civil matter between the HOA and the individual homeowner to litigate or work that out.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I, um, I wanted to just express that I find the concept or idea of the city getting involved and trying to enforce someone's covenants, uh, to be something that, it's just so not on the table or any point of conversation. I mean, that is a, that would be us selectively stepping in to say we're going to enforce certain private contracts. We wouldn't do an HOA covenant any more than we would do an employment contract or a private sale item. That's just not our space, and I think it's, um, frankly, an argument that's being made, I think, in bad faith. Um, I, I, I have spent a great deal of time over the last several years since this issue first was before council, seeking out input from people across the city. Overwhelmingly, people are in support of wanting to move forward, and in fact, most people I've talked to have reacted and said, I can't believe we don't have that already. This is a, a, a point where I think it comes down to whether we want to propose and support what someone is able to do with their own property, or we want to be able to control by outside forces what people are doing with those property. And I think we do have responsibility to set some of those boundaries, but the limitations are currently as they are, are not right, and I very much support the passage of this ordinance.
Thank you. Was there another hand? Yeah.
I just, I just had one more question. Um, as far as addresses, will the ADUs have separate addresses, or are they have the same addresses as the home that's currently on a lot?
In my opinion, they will have to have their s- their, their own address, just from an ambulance standpoint. I mean, the most important thing about an address is where is the person that needs help for an ambulance or a police officer, those type of things? So, um, uh, I don't have the code section in front of me, but my opinion would be they should have their own address.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
Yes, I, I just want to say...
That's number two. I've given you both signals for number two. I should have said it at the beginning, but go ahead.
Okay. I just want to say that, um, in response to what, um, Alderman Smith said. Well, obviously, there are a lot of people still, the taxpayers are still confused about, because I've had a lot of calls. A lot of people still think that the twenty twenty-two, um, ADU ordinance is what they're, that we're voting on and not the changes. They don't, they don't, uh, they don't understand the changes in what we're putting out now. So I, I don't know how many people you talk to, but there's still a lot of confusion out here with the public and the taxpayers of what we are doing with ADUs and what actually is on the table.
Thank you. Mr. Macias?
Thank you. Um, I, I would say, I, I've received, um, emails, uh, but I, I also feel there's a, a lot of misinformation out there pertaining to this. Not so much, uh, we did a lot of the meetings with the folks and, and there was also some disconnect with some folks, uh, where they, they assumed one thing and it really isn't, or just, uh, assume a lot of assumptions. Like, what's going to happen if this, that, and the other happens? And they get into these stories pertaining to a certain neighbor they live with, next to, or whatever. But the reality is, if you read the, the stuff on here and if you talk to people who have a, a general understanding of, of how this is really not going to have a huge impact, um, i- it really just makes sense that it's just another option for our residents to, to have if they choose to, uh, basically either create one, move in with a family member. Uh, there's just so many life scenarios that this can benefit our residents that I would just, uh, hate to impede it and, and, and over, uh, and basically not address it. This really hasn't been addressed, and other cities and municipalities have done it, so we just need to get on par with that.
Thank you, Mr. Razak.
What I have been experiencing, that I, I do definitely agree with, uh, Macias, because there are a lot of unrelated thing coming to this, uh, isn't, uh, people are not doing enough research, because what they are claim, what, what is their claim and what actually city is doing are two entirely different position. And this is the, I, I would say that this is the resident's responsibility to know, to understand the correct information. The issue over here, they are not focusing on their particular issues. They are focusing something else that is very unfortunate. And I believe that this will definitely help the large community who has the right to live in a house. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank members of the, the council. Uh, we've, uh, we reintroduced this in December, uh, twelfth of last year. Um, Plan Commission, we had five meetings about this, which was a lot of discussion. And, and every single one of those meetings had public input or the option for public input. There was a public hearing. Uh, the, the, uh, the arm of the government, which is the, the media, two newspaper articles, done channel six twice, channel four once. We had neighborhood meetings where, uh, Director Mathias talked with residents about this. This has been very well vetted, uh, in the community. And I just want to thank everyone that's been involved, uh, in those discussions, whether it's resident or staff or members of commissions, that have really created something that is well thought out and very, very well communicated over the last five months, six months. So I just want to thank you all for that.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, there is one piece as we look at the, the concerns and all everything as we, we approach these, is the idea that it's going to turn over into an excess of rental properties or move us in that direction. And I think that what we have set out in requiring the owner occupancy will solve for that problem, and it also solves for a lot of the other problems that are going to be hypothetically thrown out on the edge cases. Because I think that as we remember that it is going to be, people are doing this in their own home. And by, um, by putting this in, it goes from simply being able to do it for a select number of family members to also being able to support yourselves from the additional income to either to stay in your home or to downsize, or, um, or it's just to have a, that additional income when you have the room and the space and the opportunity for it, which is, is really a net positive. But I think that owner occupancy is going to be the biggest safeguard, and I think that is also why a lot of the concerns are not something that is, is rising to, to the occasion, to me and to most people I talk to.
Anything further from the council? If you haven't made two comments so far. All right. Hearing none, uh, roll, roll call, uh, excuse me, sorry. Hearing nothing further. Roll call please. Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Nay.
Macias?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays, and that motion carries. Thank you. Boom, you continue. Yep. Uh, non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number twenty point one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to licensing agreements with Bent River Brewing Company and HOA Hotels LLC, access slash Fifth Avenue Syndicate for the use, for the use of public right-of-way for an outdoor dining par- parklet installed by Quality Construction Services from May first, twenty twenty-four through November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Castro, seconded by Schmidt. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Item number twenty point two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Five Cities Construction Company for project number fourteen forty-seven, twenty twenty-four sidewalk infill program for the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand, thirty dollars and eighteen cents. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Castro, seconded by Timian. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Razak.
Sidewalk is very important for our residents. When we come out from house, we do not step on the street, we step on the sidewalk. So my understanding is that, uh, we are putting less important on sidewalk, more importance on road. So I would like to, I am requesting everybody to leave our seat.
Okay, so, but you would admit that by actually voting for this, we're prioritizing? And just to clarify, this is something that we already do prioritize? Like, it's been in the budget for several years? I can, wait, we can't... I'm sorry that my, I, I don't know if I'm too hot or wasn't too high. Did we motion and second this?
Yes.
You got it. Thank you. So we are discussing. Lord have mercy. Okay. Mr. Vitas has some ideas about how to prioritize that for, for the future, so he's on that same page with you.
Yeah, let, let me just share that if I might, because I think it's important to hear it now, even before we get into the CIP planning sessions in June, is that we do have sidewalk programs, uh, infill programs, where there are no sidewalks to fill gaps, especially around the schools. I mean, that's kind of been the, the, the city's priority. And then reaching beyond the schools, of course, there's still a need for infill. And if you walk the city, you'll find where sidewalks are missing. You'll end up on the street. It doesn't take, take much. And I know, Barb's waving her hand, she pointed out quite a few at the Ward One meeting. Uh, and we're looking at every one of those. But, you know, I, I think the other issue is, again, you've got the roads, and those will always be a focus, and our utilities. But you also have old sidewalks. And the question is, is where should that priority lie? And if I was to ask different people this question, I might get a different answer. If I was to ask our insurance company, they would say repairs first, infill second, guaranteed, because a trip and a fall and an injury probably meet results in a loss, and we are self-insured to a degree. So as we look forward to our, our June sessions, I want you to be thinking about that, because as you walk through the city, especially the older wards, you're going to find some very dilapidated sidewalks that present great risk, not just at the intersections where the ADA adjustments need to happen if they haven't, or they did happen and now they're no longer really good. But then as you walk the sidewalks, you start to see where we've, you know, where we in the past would fix broken slabs and then leave the older slabs, and now the older slabs caught up with the ones we've replaced. So it's hit and miss. So I think, I think, uh, David Drier, I know he's probably listening.
I am.
I guessed you were, David. But, and I, I think we could look at reprioritizing that as well, you know, fair prior to infill. And that would be my recommendation, actually.
Mr. Timian?
I, uh, did Director Drier want to say something?
Dave, you want to comment?
No, I, I agree with you, Bob. I've, I was trained by an old city engineer who said he was never sued by a sidewalk he hadn't built. So, so there is something to be said about maintaining what you have as opposed to new. At the same time, there are many segments of sidewalk that are important, linkages in the system that should be completed. And, you know, we've walked, worked with complete streets on that. Uh, the Ward One meeting that we had recently, a number of sidewalks that were failing that were brought up and we're working to, uh, address those as best we can. And then there were new sidewalk segments that were identified, which will be taking the complete streets, uh, as part of, uh, future budget requests. So I, I agree. So I I agree. It it's a good point, good discussion.
Mister Timian?
So, thank you, Your Honor. These uh I just, as a member of Complete Streets, these two segments that we're infilling uh are close to schools, and that's where we targeted. Uh, third thirty-first, um, sorry, thirty-third street, uh, right by the high school, obviously. Uh, that whole section of town doesn't have sidewalks, and so we've been systematically hitting them one year at a time, trying to spread it out. And the other segment uh hits Alderperson Schmidt's neighborhood where uh there's a lot of school-aged children uh walking to Roosevelt or to McDonald's or a lot of things there. So these are well way overdue and I think well needed. And I appreciate um the approach this year where we were just hitting two big projects instead of twenty small ones. We're getting a lot of bang for our buck on on these ones, and and it's, I'm just glad to see these happening and moving.
Okay, anything further from the council on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Mercius?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Item number twenty point three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to licensing agreements with eighteen forty-eight Entertainment LLC, DBA Pub eighteen forty-eight, and Stony Creek Caters LLC, DBA Stony Creek Inn, for use of public right-of-way for use of the Bass Street Landing Public Plaza for the outdoor service of alcoholic liquor and food from May eighth, twenty twenty-four to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Castro, seconded by Mercius. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Mercius?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Item number twenty point four, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to licensing agreements with Bent River Brewing Company and Three Bros Hospitality LLC, DBA Poor Bros Craft Tap Room for use of public right-of-way for use of the Bass Street Landing Public Plaza to sell alcoholic liquor in conjunction with the Bass Street Landing Summer Concert Series from May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four through August eighth, twenty twenty-four. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Castro, seconded by Mercius. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Mercius?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
All right, um, just wanna, in moving to Miss Lenny's business, I wanna update you on a couple just interactions recently. One, I'm proud to say that um Moline has been recognized as a twenty twenty-three Tree City USA and received a growth award from the Arbor Day Foundation. So that's wonderful, and congrats to our staff. Please pass that on for making that happen. Along those lines of the environment, um for some time, our um Enviro Working Group had been trying to get us to get some more um sustainable utensils and things like that in our joint purchasing through ByState Regional Commission. And finally, they are gearing up uh and working with the city on a survey of all of the other towns to try to get more of that, because as we knew from, I think it was twenty twenty-one, we've we got the data back that single-use plastics is the biggest pollutant in our water system. And so however we can move our uh communities to use fewer of those single-use plastics will improve our water quality and um what have you. So that's exciting that we're actually getting to a place where we might be able to shift over through our joint purchasing agreements, which help us buy things at lower cost. Um, and along along the same lines, I did have a meeting today with representatives from the Prairie Rivers Network. Um, they work on all all kinds of climate things, and they uh finished a community climate assessment that they wanted to share with me for this whole Quad City area. I'll keep this um on the table in my office. If you would like to peruse it or if you wanna get your own, it's Prairie Rivers Network if you wanna reach out to them. But they were very interested in partnering on projects. This is not the same organization as the Clean River Advisory Council, but they do talk to one another, so they're not, you know, repeating um things and depleting resources, et cetera, for folks that wanna work on this stuff. But I I, they know of Dawn. Um, I talked about some of the things we have been working on. They knew about our solar project already. Um, so just another partner in the area. They're based out of Champaign, but there's a local office of a couple people as well. So that's that. And then just a thought to let you know, um, um, you, as you saw in our emails this weekend, you know, our police department and was quite busy dealing with um violent-related issues um in the city. And I just wanted to communicate to the the council that I take um our partnerships and the partnerships they have with people in the city partnerships very seriously. And the chief and I have talked about engaging with youth previously. Um, and I just wanted you to know, I'm gonna continue to talk to our youth commission about doing more than passing out checks for programs that they really need to partner with a lot of the folks that I've talked with um over the course of time here who have spaces and wanna create youth real, youth programs. Um, so I just wanted to let the council know that those conversations have been, are being had. And um I appreciate all the work that's been done to communicate so far. Um, and all the work your staff has done. As you noted, it was a very busy Sunday, so we thank them. That is all I have. Miss Murphy?
I have nothing.
Okay, Mister Mercius?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just a reminder, uh, Tuesday um at six P M, it'll be the second ward meeting. Um, we'll have our our staff there, um, uh, David Dreyer, Denver, uh, Brad Holman. Be, you know, we're gonna have quite the uh the representation from the city. So if you live in the second ward, stop by. I even had somebody from the third ward that wants to visit, because they live so close to the second ward. And um, so yeah, just uh hopefully we could get a good turnout. It's at Mercado on Fifth in the building, so.
Thank you. Mister Razak?
No, nothing you don't have.
Mister Timian?
Uh, I would like to remind council that this Thursday is the neighborhood meeting.
Oh, yes.
And that'll be nine A M. And the community, the whole meeting, this happens once a a month or so where the uh leaders of all the different uh neighborhood groups get together and just discuss uh uh strategies and and plans, uh, whether it's block parties or cleanups or just different programs uh that they engage in. Alderperson Mercius will be presenting. So if we attend, we can't really say much, but uh it's it's always a pleasure to be there and to network with members of the uh different neighborhood groups. So I encourage you to attend if you can. Thank you.
Mister McNeil?
Um, there's an East End neighborhood cleanup this Saturday, uh, seven to eleven A M. So um if you're interested in coming down and helping out, uh, first go to Public Works to check in, and they've got bags and gloves and everything you need.
Thank you. Mister Castro?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mister Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
So you guys?
Huh, my turn. So just very briefly, um, looking back over over this evening's meeting, and I know it was on on the consent agenda, and some people attended. So congratulations on the Dear Wyman House being actually now officially placked. Uh, and that's really wonderful news for for that property and all you do there and all the visitors that we receive, tourists. Um, a very important tourist destination here in Moline, uh, for not only us, but for those who travel to the area from far faraway places. Uh, secondly, I'm looking at the audience, and I I see Alex is here, and I see Pete McDermott is here. And I wanna thank both of them. Uh, one is the the sale of the property to allow for the green space necessary for the daycare, which is part of the J.C. Penney Project. Uh, would not be possible without that. We needed the green space, so thank you. And I wanna thank Alex in particular for all the heavy lifting she did. You know, she doesn't like accolades, but I'm gonna make sure she gets them tonight, like I did at the Par Instrument groundbreaking. Uh, she is a true right hand to the city. Renew is a true right hand. Uh, I think without them, it'd be much more difficult to get things done around here, especially how, you know, uh, the the economic environment that we find ourselves in is very challenging. So, you know, she stuck to her guns, and if it wasn't gonna be J.C. Penney, there was a different building. It started somewhere else on Fifth Avenue. She kept it on Fifth Avenue, just moved it a few blocks to the east. And, you know, I'm proud to say we're gonna see some residential development there with our with our new partner, uh, Bush Construction. So, thank you very much. And with that, and of course, Chris, you came late to the party, but you, you know, you held your own and you made it all come together from the CED perspective, too. Um, a lot of a lot of wheeling and dealing there. I I let I let uh let Chris work specifically with Mister McDermott because we're neighbors, and they want any collusion. So now we can talk across the yards. So anyhow, thank you very much for the moment to just share that.
Thank you. Any other staff? No? Okay. Public comment? Just come to the mic, please.
Um, okay, sorry. Um, this is an answer to your question about the Fourth of July parade. You have no idea about the history of it. It was started by a man named Ken Johnson who taught at John Dear Middle School, served in World War Two. Um, his family was involved with the Moline Furniture Company, Moline Furniture Company. Um, burned down, but it was located close to Sylvan Island. The booths that you see in Logomarcinos were built by them. They also are responsible for what was the desks at the Senate in Springfield, but I think they now have replaced those. But they were there for many, many years. So it's a a company. They also did some furniture for the United States government in Washington, D.C. And um Kenny started it on Twenty-Fifth Avenue with the kids that lived along there east of Twelfth Street. And then it expanded and went around that area. So, um, that's the story.
Documented that?
I'm sorry, what?
Has anybody documented it?
Diane, you better write it down for everybody. I'm here for a relevant historian.
It's there. Put it in, put it in the record.
Yeah, yeah, no, could you give us his name one more time?
His name is Ken Johnson.
Okay.
And he lived on Twenty-Fifth Avenue Court, and I know he was living there in nineteen seventy-one, because that's where I live.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Wow, that's cool.
All right, anything further? No? Seeing none? Uh, executive session?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of property acquisition dash five I L C S one twenty slash two C five.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderperson Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Mercius?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion carries.